Is it time? Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of Bella Vista City Council, July 24, 2023. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of attendance.
Councilmember Snow.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Wozniak.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Hansel.
Here.
Wilmz. Absent. Mayor's present.
The first item is citizen input. I just want to remind people there's a three-minute per person limit to address the council on any topic of that person's choosing. Total time allotted for citizen input is 30 minutes. Any time extension beyond the 30 will be at the discretion of city council. I think we'll probably fit within 30 minutes. If you could, when you come up to speak, clarify what city you live in, if I don't announce it. The first speaker is Peggy Lucas of 23 Duesbury Drive in Bella Vista.
Good evening, council. So I've said all along for almost two years now that I'm not against short-term rentals, but I am against short-term rental abuse. So for about two years, we've asked our city council to stop the STR abuse that is occurring in our neighborhoods with ordinances that do not currently exist today. And I thank you, city council, for listening to me and the many other residents that have come before you with the STR issues that you continue to push forward for residents in Bella Vista against much-needed ordinances to stop the STR abuse. I'm just going to reiterate things that I've said for the last two years. So being a resident in Bella Vista living next door to problem STRs is quite a different experience than being a property owner. As residents, we live next door to the problems that keep repeating themselves because we're not getting to the root cause. For two years, residents have come to this forum sharing the issues they experience over and over again. The issues are repetitive because current ordinances do not address the root problem. Residents do not want to live in a transient community. We moved here, purchased our homes to live in quiet, safe neighborhoods. In a transient community, homes are full of guests that do not live here. Before you know it, you do not have neighbors anymore. This is a threat to our community. It's happening all over America. We do not want the commercialization of our neighborhoods. So we ask you to cap the number of STRs, and you address that with the new ordinance. And I thank you for that. I thank you for hearing us. It's a violation of residential property rights to have to live next door to unmanaged STRs, to repeatedly have to address noise issues, parking issue, drunken disorderly behavior, misuse of our lakes. There were no ordinances prior to what you passed last week to address the repetitive nature, the repetitive abuse of our right to the quiet, peaceful enjoyment of our residential properties. The ordinances we have asked for that did not previously exist before the recent ordinance you voted on last week are intended to hold STR property owners accountable for the repeated parking and noise issues and disruptive behaviors occurring on their properties, to force owner involvement in solving the problems that STRs are causing for the neighborhoods of the community. There are many responsible short-term rental owners that manage their properties. They're here. They've been here, just like we have been here for the last couple of years. But they don't represent all the approximately 500 STR owners that manage their properties. Unfortunately, they don't represent the approximately 500 STRs in our community. So we asked for these new ordinances, and we thank you that you voted on that last week. What we have here in Bella Vista is very special. It's a special community. It's beautiful. While we welcome others, we must also put measures in place for those that want to use and abuse our community. We want to preserve their right to enjoy our residential properties and to live safely in our community. I want to personally thank Doug Fowler. Doug, you've been back and forth to Little Rock and here and in this sessions. So I want to thank you, Craig, Larry, Jim Wozniak, mayor, for continuing this much-needed effort, the right ordinances in place.
Thank you, Peggy. Appreciate it. The next speaker is Ellen Creek Baum of 50 Churchill Drive in Bella Vista.
I'm getting tired of this, but I'm here again, and I'm not giving up. I have property rights, too. My right to sell will be impacted if I live next door to an STR motel. The enjoyment of my property may also be impacted. Everything has been said over the past two years in all these meetings, emails, letters to the editor, there's another one coming out, and testimony in Little Rock. The city council took out pieces of the ordinance that the STR owners didn't like. Now, why are they fighting still? Again, follow the money. Follow the money to Little Rock also, as this is not just about Bella Vista, but we are the focus right now. Our cities, other cities have ordinances, and they're working on those ordinances in many others. There's a difference between a long-term rental and a short-term rental. One is a home, rented to someone as a home. The others are rooms for rent, a motel. These businesses must be limited, if not removed, in residential neighborhoods. There's a need for their existence, but not at any cost. They should be zoned to designated areas. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, city employees that may be here. Thank you, mayor and city council members, for what you are doing, for what you've done for the past two years, and for all the work that is still to come, fighting this in the courts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Amy Darpinian of 6 Lerwick Lane in Bella Vista.
Thank you, mayor. I'm Amy, and I live at 6 Lerwick, Bella Vista, like the mayor mentioned. And I just want to say I love our new city. I've only lived here for 11 months and embrace all of it. I want to speak today to urge adoption of the Bella Vista Community Action Plan as it relates to the bicycle and pedestrian plan. I have a couple questions and a couple comments. The plan mentions a map that's digitally available somewhere. Would like to find out where that is, and that's possible. I'm obviously pro-trail. I like to walk my dogs. My husband and I hike. I take the paved and the unpaved trails, and I think for the most part our trail plan looks awesome. I might ask that the trail manager look at the community action plan a little bit to make sure that we need both a bike lane on 71 going north to Missouri and a greenway going north to Missouri. It seems maybe one or the other might be adequate. I like the fact that there's emphasis on east-west connections to be safe. As a driver on Glasgow, I won't walk on Glasgow because I just can't do it safely. It'll make safety better for bicyclists, walkers, people pushing strollers. There has been a lot of progress made since the 2014 plan was put into place and adopted. But many of the same issues that were raised in that one as needs are still in the present community action plan. For example, the active transportation committee that was identified as being referred to the recreation committee, as far as I know, that never actually got formed, and they're now calling it an active transportation advisory board. I would urge that we step that up a little bit quicker. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Abby Foster of 17 Isla Lane in Bella Vista.
Hey there. Mayor Flynn and members of the city council. On STRs, I'm taking a page from Louisiana Senator John Kennedy's book. When I say it takes a very special kind of stupid to think that you're going to open a motel in a residential area and nobody is going to say or do anything about it. Our neighborhoods are an extension of our homes, and our neighbors an extension of our families. That's the way it has always been in America, and I firmly believe that is the way it will stay. Americans across our country have begun to stand up and be heard relative to this invasive practice, and we are no longer willing to be the silent majority on this topic. That said, I want to thank our council for putting the ordinance in place and for standing up to the STR owners' efforts to silence our voices. Councilman Fowler, you've led this effort in a way that is ethical, moral, and honest. In return, you've been bullied, demonized, villainized, and worse. In the face of these unprecedented assaults, you have remained loyal to Bella Vista residents, and I cannot thank you enough. Councilmen Wilmz, Wozniak, and Hansel, thank you for listening to us and responding in support of the majority of Bella Vista residents. Councilwoman Hughes, you sat on my couch in my living room and told me in no uncertain terms that you supported the ordinance to regulate STRs. That is the primary reason I supported your campaign and the reason a whole load of other Bella Vista residents notified their neighbors and friends to vote for you. Your behavior since being elected reflects a different truth. In the words of the late, great Maya Angelou, "When someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time." Ms. Hughes, we believe you. Councilwoman Snow, the only thing I want from you is a resignation. You have turned a deaf ear and a blind eye to 97% of your constituents in your efforts to pander to the short-term rental owners. We will work diligently to ensure that this is your final term as a leader in Bella Vista. Finally, we understand that this fight is going to continue, and I want to thank our city attorney and mayor for standing with your residents. We will never give up, and we will never give in, and we will support you in doing the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Don Sennett of 22 Brittany Lane.
Good evening. First of all, thank you all for your work on this important issue. I'm going to address something a little bit off tonight because it's important we keep it in mind. Airbnb is a San Francisco-based organization, $8.4 billion in revenue. VRBO is a $10 billion...
Pardon me, Don. Could you get the microphone up there, Sennett? I can't hear you back there.
Sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
VRBO is a $10 billion organization. So we're looking at $18.4 billion going against what you want to do. We need to keep this in mind because I worked with others down in Little Rock to stop the legislature from making a very foolish move in passing an ordinance that would have prohibited you from doing any ordinances to protect us. There's a word old guys like me understand very well called confabulation. That's when you fill in memory gaps with imagined answers. And that's what we're running into with the interpretations of the Constitution. We keep hearing things such as Arkansasans have a constitutional right to use their property without intrusion by the government. That's BS. Government always intervenes to protect its citizens. The other thing we had when we faced the legislation down in Little Rock was them saying that the STR owners have the right to use their property as they see fit. Well, that's true. If that's true, I'm going to open shooting range in my back alley.
Sorry, Don, your time's up, but thank you. Next speaker is Anita Malloy of 16 Bromyard Lane.
Good evening, mayor and councilpeople. This is my first time to ever attend one of these meetings. I don't know the history of the STR discussions that have gone on and the ordinances that have been passed, but I'm here now. And we have an Airbnb on my street. We have another lot with someone who's talking about building a second one. I think there should be a limit to one per street. I think there should be a limit to what the house looks like. If it looks different than the other houses, I don't think that is right. Right now, the one on our street has a parking strip that is where I came from in California. It's called a slum parking strip, and they have one in the front and on the side. The gravel is white, and it doesn't look good. That was the prettiest house on our street until it became an STR. There's too many cars. There should be some limit as to how many cars there can be. When I came here, I asked about home businesses. The city said we don't like home businesses because there's too many cars, people coming to your house for meetings, or people coming to your house to pick up something or deliver something, or whatever. And I think that these are home businesses. If we want home businesses, then we should allow for these kind, for any parking that needs to be there, and for anyone else that wants a home business on their street for all the parking that they want. But I don't really want that. I want my house to look nice and be sellable. So I think there should be some restrictions. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lisa Ferguson from 4 Shakespeare Drive.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to add some comments about the zoning issues rather than the STRs. So 4 Shakespeare Drive, we live next to the very first one in your packet, that ordinance at the Kingswood facility. I understand that the goal is to make this zoning consistent, but in our neighborhood we have some concerns about rezoning this from conservation to commercial. We don't understand what impacts that might have. Currently, various folks in the neighborhood, we access the golf course to get to Sugar Creek, or to the trail, or just on the edge there outside of golfing hours. We understand there may be consideration being given to building fences, and this rezoning would allow that. And we just ask that due consideration be given to the POA members and residents in those neighborhoods if that is the effect of that rezoning change. If that is an effect of the rezoning change, we'd ask that that be consistent in all of the golf courses and all of the access in neighborhoods that are but to it. It's one of the amenities, I guess, to be able to access that POA common property without having to drive somewhere early in the morning or in the evening outside of golfing hours, and we'd encourage your consideration of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Katie Young of 24 Peace Drive.
Good evening. I would like to address some thoughts about our neighborhood in Peace Drive. We live over on a cul-de-sac on one of the lakes, and of the six houses that are in that cul-de-sac, two of them are short-term rentals. So you can imagine what that's like on the weekends. The only thing I can tell you is when we moved to Bella Vista many years ago, we really felt that neighborhoods were important and that neighborhoods were something that we needed. You know, that's the reason we moved here, the quality of life and the neighborhoods. You know, those houses are vacant all week long. On Fridays, Thursdays and Fridays, we get a new crop of people with new cars, new everything coming into our neighborhoods. We have no way of knowing who these people may be. The only thing we do know is they've got a credit card, at least one of them does, that's enough to cover the short-term rental, we hope. Now, that doesn't say a whole lot for us as neighbors because, you know, those houses are empty all week long, and then we get a flood of people in on the weekends. Now, that's just the nature of short-term rental. The only thing I can say is we need the regulations on limiting the number of short-term rentals in this community. If not, the prime properties, the ones on the lake, the ones on the golf courses, those are the ones that are going to be absorbed by the short-term rentals. And the rest of us, you know, can you imagine what a small lake is like when you've got six and seven short-term rentals on the weekend? Because even limiting the number of people in those short-term rentals to three people a bedroom, you have a lot of people that just come in on the weekends, and, you know, it's just not a very good situation. I hope that you will really concentrate on this and limit the number of short-term rentals that we have. In fact, I would go so far as to say we probably need to limit the number of short-term rentals that go in on certain streets or so forth because already on our street, you know, we've got two or three. So just look at it from our viewpoint. We're law-abiding citizens who love our neighbors and love our neighborhoods and love Bella Vista. Please see to our needs. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sandy Schmidt. Sandy, if you can give us your address.
I live at 1 Fleming Circle on Lake Brittany. I'd like to start out with saying that no one should have to put up with robbing neighbors, whether they're short-term rental people or permanent residents. I'd like to live on Hollick Drive, and there's beautiful homes on Hollick Drive, and one home had about five families that lived in it. They had cars all over their yard. They had an old wash machine out in front. They discontinued use of their trash, and the smell was awful in the backyard. And the city was called over and over, and we were told nothing could be done. My point is, is that you could have a long-term, a short-term, or a permanent resident that can cause problems. And I'd like to reiterate that what Chief Wozniak said a couple months ago was that we knew who the bad actors were, nothing was done, we did not enforce the ordinances that were already in place, trash, parking, noise. It snowballed, and here we are. I don't believe this is a total short-term rental problem. I live on the lake, and there are many rentals on my lake. I never feel crowded. I never feel like it's out of control. There has been one home that is out of control, and the owner does not live in Bella Vista. And I would love to have regulations for that, to appoint people for every single Airbnb or Verbo in Bella Vista. It's necessary. I even wrote this man and told him so. But again, the city was called, and nothing was done. And so here we are. Don, say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. It's now time for a council member reply, and I just want to mention that, you know, this matters in litigation. In fact, we had two different filings we received today. So I'd appreciate it if you would limit your remarks in light of that, but go ahead.
Mayor, can we ask how many people are left who wanted to speak? And we can have a vote to let them talk or not? How many people haven't spoken yet and have something, you know, different to say than what we've already heard? Just two?
We should have them sign the sheet, but you should have them sign the sheet.
I don't know if they signed the sheet. Is that all you leave on the list?
Yeah, they did sign.
Did I go to the city hall where it was posted to be? And so I think I got here before 6:30, but get our [inaudible].
Well, Jason, can we, you know, can council allow them to speak, or how does that work?
Move to suspend the rule and allow additional people to speak if you so desire.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
I would suggest that you somehow figure out how many...
Well, just those two. The only two that raised their hand.
Yeah, those two.
In addition, I would ask the motion...
I'll make sure they sign.
Include the signing in of the form for those two people.
Well, maybe the sheet was gone when they came in. Maybe they came in late, like Sunday.
No, he means sign it now so the clerk will have the info, that's all. So that was a motion by Wilmz and a second by Wozniak.
That's fine, or down there. It doesn't matter as long as you still want.
So roll call vote. Motion is to overturn the rules and allow two extra people to speak.
Just those two people that raised their hand.
Yeah.
Three minutes each.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. It's now time for a council member reply, and I just want to mention that, you know, this matters in litigation. In fact, we had two different filings we received today. So I'd appreciate it if you would limit your remarks in light of that, but go ahead.
Mayor, can we ask how many people are left who wanted to speak? And we can have a vote to let them talk or not? How many people haven't spoken yet and have something, you know, different to say than what we've already heard? Just two?
We should have them sign the sheet, but...
Huh?
Should have them sign the sheet.
I don't know if they signed the sheet. Is that all you leave on the list?
Yeah, yeah, they didn't sign.
Did I go to the city hall where it was posted to me? And so I think I got here before 6:30, but get our address.
Well, Jason, can we, you know, can council allow them to speak, or how does that work?
Move to suspend the rule and allow additional people to speak if you so desire.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
I would suggest that you somehow figure out how many...
Well, just those two. They're the only two that raised their hand.
Yeah, those two.
In addition, I would ask the motion to...
I'll make sure they sign.
Include the signing in of the form for those two people.
Well, maybe the sheet was gone when they came in. Maybe they came in late, like Sunday.
No, he means sign it now so the clerk will have the info. That's all. So that was a motion by Wilms and a second by Wozniak.
That's fine, or down there. It doesn't matter as long as you still want.
So roll call vote. Motion is to overturn the rules and allow two extra people to speak.
Just those two people that raised their hand.
Yeah.
Three minutes each.
Yes.
Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Hanschel?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
A motion carried five to zero. The one that's closest would like to come up. I want to give you the list first so you could... I won't take a part of your three minutes for that.
Six to zero. Six to zero, the answer is five, zero, six to zero.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She doesn't have to sign the sheet. The rules have been suspended.
Okay, let's see. This is Jessie Keller.
Keller. Six. Down in tree.
Okay. Is that in Bella Vista?
It is.
Okay.
I am here as a resident in Bella Vista and STR owner. I, again, this comes back to property rights for me. I, the vast majority of STR owners are not against any regulation. We believe that there are some that make sense. We also feel that the ones that have been put in place are far overreaching. And we also feel like we are law-abiding residents of this community. We are invested in this community. It's been stated over and over that we are invested in our properties looking good and not looking trashy. We can't make money or stay in business without our properties being in tip-top shape. I don't have much more to add that you haven't already heard. I just wanted to make sure that the council and those in attendance know that there are STR members that are here and are against the overreach from the council and disappointed that after you were ordered by a judge to stand down pretty much that you kind of flew in the face of that order and just kind of rewrote something that's pretty much the same thing. So that was a disappointment and honestly, felt like a lack of integrity. I know that there's those of you who would like to really get these regulations passed, Mr. Fowler being chief among you. And I just wanted you to know that we are also in favor of a good community. We do what we can to make sure that things run properly. And I know that there are very few complaints, and I don't have the numbers off the top of my head right now, but the number of complaints in the previous years was so low, and that comes from the same places. And I don't know what difference there's going to be between the ordinances we already have for the city and passing new ordinances if you can't even enforce the ones that are already on the books. It kind of seems redundant to pass a lot of these things and a financial burden on the STR owners. So that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. This is Brenda Hofer of 15 Annette Lane. Is that in Bella Vista?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I've been trying to get a permit to build a carport for 30 days. And today, I finally had a meeting with the city. This is after I have an ACC permit. I have the townhouse approval. I had the 811 call marked for the utilities, done all that. 30 days later, I make an appointment to try to get a city permit. And they tell me because of the right-of-way, I need to have my property surveyed. My property is 45 years old. My driveway is 45 years old. It shows on the plat map that I have a 40-foot right-of-way from a 45-year-old plat map. But I was told that Cooper would sometimes build over that right-of-way line. So this is an additional. I talked to a surveyor, and he said it would be an additional $1,000 to $1,200 to have my property surveyed. The response I got from Doug Tap in the permit office was the survey could prevent you from damage in the future. The right-of-way is where utilities are located, and if you build over the right-of-way, they could dig it up in the future. Utilities companies like Carroll Electric, Cox Cable, AT&amp;T, Village Way Soft Water, et cetera, don't have to get permits to dig in these right-of-way easements. I would hate for you to build a carport to later find out that it's in a right-of-way. Well, my neighbors have two carports. Everyone around me has a carport that if I look at the map online, the property line that shows, it goes right through their carports. 45 years later, I don't know of any carport that has ever had to be dug up because of an easement issue. I think a survey is excessive. My response to him was I would take full responsibility if that ever happened where an easement needed to be dug up for some reason. But the difficulty, the time of 30 days to wait to even find this out, to go through all the other procedures to get approvals, and now to find out I've had a contractor in hold, it's costing money every day to go through this process, and it's been arduous. So if we could have somebody that we could check into this, I would appreciate it, and I appreciate your time. And I fully support all these people.
Thank you. Okay. Now it's time for council member reply if somebody wants to say something.
Okay. First, I just to, you know, say thank you for, you know, all your support, kind words. I really appreciate it personally. And of course, some of the comments strike at the balance of the council as well. You know, I'd just like to take a step back a little bit here and just say if anybody thought I was looking forward to what unfolded with the proposal of STR ordinance, they would be completely wrong. I did not ever think or believe that it would ever take on the life that it did, pretty painful at times. I can tell you it did not start with me at all. It started with my constituents, who are the people of Bella Vista, that called me, approached me, wrote me, and continually voiced their issues that they had with this business. And that's exactly what it is. I am not opposed to short-term rentals at all. I've said many times I am actually the chairperson for the Bella Vista Advertising Promotion Commission, Discover Bella Vista, if you will. And I'm very proud of the work that we have done in branding, promoting, and marketing, and bringing attention to Bella Vista and all of our amenities and the tourism that has brought to our city and means, you know, really a significant amount of revenue. And with that promotion, we also mentioned the short-term rental community. We're very supportive. However, there were issues. There are issues that still remain, and they are multifaceted, actually. It isn't just any one thing. Whenever this conversation started, whenever it begun, it did start with basically different nuisance issues, if you will. And a lot of those nuisance issues had to do with over occupancy, quite frankly. And I'm not going to put a number on over occupancy, but a number of people that in my humble opinion didn't belong into three or even four-bedroom homes. So that is where it started. But whenever I went and started talking to different members of our different departments, some other issues related to... that could have unfolded with short-term rentals were discussed with me that had already been being discussed internally, unknown to me. And they totally made sense. And in writing and crafting our ordinance, those issues were addressed in just about any other city across the country that wrote a short-term rental ordinance. We did not do anything out of the ordinary at all. We really worked hard to do what made sense, and we tried to make them as succinct as possible. Our ordinance was like two and a half pages or something like that. Maybe it was three pages. I don't even know. I went through ordinances that were 30 and 35 pages long, and it really got off into the weeds. And we did not do that at all. The ordinance that was... had an injunction placed against it because of the language it was in. It was the way it was written. What was it, Jason? How did the judge?
Undisputed litigation matter.
Okay, well, it's just her word. It said, you know, the current way it is written or its current form potentially had constitutional issues in the state of Arkansas. We don't even know what those specifically are. So we went back.
We concede that.
Pardon me?
We don't concede that.
No, no, I'm not saying that's...
Undisputed litigation matters.
Okay, I'm not trying... Okay, I'm not saying right, wrong, or indifferent. That was just words. So we went back and did a rewrite, put it in different language, and took some components out of it. They're just really very simple, kind of like a registration almost. But anyway, you know, without going on any farther, I would just like to say, you know, again, thank you for your support. Really appreciate it. And I guess we'll see what unfolds if it comes forward. And I think the people of Bella Vista need to be heard, and that's simply what began this whole conversation.
Thank you. We ready to move to the next item? Okay. Action on the minutes of the regular meeting of June 26, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
That's Mr. Wilms and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hanschel?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. The next item on the agenda is reports. We have the financial report for the five-month period ending May 31, 2023. It's been distributed to the city council, and it's available on the website. We continue to have good results. The revenue is greater than budget in operating revenue, and the operating expenses are less than budget. So the results so far are promising, and we feel good about our position. So the next item is the chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
So moved. Second.
That's Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wozniak. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hanschel?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Wilms?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Now for new business. The first item is amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48834, county parcel number 16-70254-000 and 16-70254-003 from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And I note staff requests, third and final reading. We did have a comment from a citizen, so it wasn't... I wonder if the council wanted to hear from Mr. Judson?
I would entertain that.
Yeah. Tom, if you could, come up.
As we've done before... Sorry, you want to go first?
Well, that's just so... It was Ms. Ferguson that she spoke. She was concerned about the rezone bringing like fencing or some kind of restrictive anything.
Keep in mind, we're only rezoning the small location where the maintenance facility is located. We have no intention of adding a fence. I don't know where the rumor came from. And if any citizen is here today, has additional questions for me after my two proposals, I'll be in the lobby if anybody wants to ask any additional questions. But there have been some false rumors going around. That's just not the case. We're not going to add any fence. That was never a plan.
Yeah, and I'd just like to reiterate. So this is just one acre of 145 acres.
That is correct.
Correct. This isn't the whole entire parcel of land.
Absolutely not. But we are required to note, by ordinance, we are required to notify everybody that is within 200 feet of the entire parcel, even though we're just doing the one acre meets and bounds.
Right.
Any additional questions?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. As I said, the staff requested moving the third and final. Is there a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
That's Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hanschel. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanschel?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. So I will read it for the third and final time. Amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48834, county parcel number 16-70254-000 and 16-70254-003 from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilms. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Hanschel?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. The next matter is ordinance amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-49581, county parcel number 16-78018-004 from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And this is the Metfield Secondary Maintenance Facility on Jack Crabtree.
Yeah, so this is a similar situation as the last rezone we just approved. So once again, it's one acre tract of 59.65 acres. So I like to say, I think the POA, since the beginning of their rezone request, have done a nice job of, you know, getting down to like the meets and bounds area, you know, specifically what they want to have rezoned and not doing larger tracts of land. So it doesn't cause as much controversy with them, you know, the community. So just to make sure and clarify, that's all it is.
Yeah. Would someone like to move to third and final reading?
So moved. Second.
That's Mr. Wozniak and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote to go to third and final reading.
Councilmember Wozniak?
Hughes? Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero, now I'll read it for the third and final time. Amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-49581, county parcel number 16-78018-004, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Wilmes, roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. The next ordinance is amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-49824, county parcel number 16-29541-000, from P1 Conservation District to R1 Residential Single Family District. And this is at 10 Dunn Donald Lane. It was in the middle of a residential, and they thought perhaps it was an error. Staff is requesting this go to third and final also.
Yeah, just like to say if anybody had any questions, if you saw the map like we did, this is a residential neighborhood that has one lot zoned as a P1 Conservation District, and no one really knows how that happened, so that didn't make any sense. I'd like to make a motion to suspend rules and move it for our third and final. Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel, roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Is there a motion to approve? Oh, I need to read it third time, very good. Amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-49824, county parcel number 16-29541-000, from P1 Conservation District to R1 Residential Single Family District. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
It's Mr. Snow and Mr. Fowler, roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next one is an ordinance amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-49912, county parcel number 16-40236-000, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Taylor, I wonder if you want to come up and explain some of the recent events?
Staff just wanted to provide an update that since the work session last Monday, later this week, or earlier, later of last week, sorry, the applicant surveyor provided a new drawing. However, it was a little late for this meeting, but we should be good and ready to go by the next meeting or the next work session in August, so we can get the ordinance adapted a little bit to meet the recommendation of the Planning Commission. So the floodway's been mapped out like we requested for that to be zoned as P1. Just wasn't in time for this meeting, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
And the applicant is here tonight.
And this applies to the next parcel also, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
What's the actual location of that property?
It's just northwest of the intersection of Lambeth and Mercy Way.
Across from the Mercy Complex and behind the veterinary facility at the corner of Lambeth and Dr. Mark.
Correct.
I just want, this is just first reading, so we'll get the map and be able to look at it next week. I did want to mention something that went on in the work session. You know, the applicant asked for C1, and our staff said it seemed to them it definitely should be C2. And then when we asked the applicant about that, why did you just ask for C1? He basically said, "It's hard to get you guys to say yes," I'm paraphrasing. So, and we also had some people give speeches about how, you know, we need more sales tax money, and, you know, we don't have much commercial property. So it seems to me completely logical, since there has not been a single complaint from anyone about it, that it be C2. That's something for you to think about for next week. It seems obvious it should be C2. I have a lot of confidence in our staff, and as I say, nobody made any objection to Planning Commission or here, so. Okay, so I'm going to read E, even though it's related parcel. So it gets the first reading. Amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-49795, county parcel number 16-79388-000, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. So this will just be first reading on this one also, we'll wait till next week. Larry?
I would ask our planning staff if they could provide at the work session some comments about the pros and cons of going to the C2 versus C1, because it is more, allows more intense uses in the commercial area, and whether that has any potential impacts for its site's location, for the lot location that we're looking at.
That's a good idea, thank you. Next one is ordinance F, waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Auto Group in the amount of $40,980 for the purchase of one 2023 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 truck for use by the Community Development Services Department. So.
Move it be approved.
Second.
We got to go to third and final.
Yeah, we may want to go to third and final first.
Make a motion to suspend rules and go to third and final. Second.
That was a motion by Doug Fowler and a second by Craig Hansel. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero, so I'll read the ordinance. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Auto Group in the amount of $40,980 for the purchase of one 2023 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 truck for use by the Community Development Services Department. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel, roll call vote.
Councilmembers Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
And Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next one is an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in the total amount of $59,548 for the purchase of one 2023 Dodge Charger Police Pursuit Vehicle for use by the Police Department.
Does this one go to third and final also?
Yeah, I think that would probably be good.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
That's Mr. Snow and Mr. Wilmes, roll call vote. Suspend the rules and go to third and final, right?
Councilmembers Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes. So moved.
Mr. Wilmes, and second by Mr. Snow. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
And Wilmes?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item is an ordinance amending Section 2-201 Duties of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to clarify the duties of the city clerk and for other purposes. And this is the amendment we had, because the old city clerk's duties have changed somewhat from the old ordinance. Is there any discussion?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final. Second.
That's Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote on the motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Which one is this, G?
The city clerk, number H.
Councilmembers Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Wilmes, roll call vote to approve.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. I was a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Scott R. Martin to position seven on the Bella Vista Board of Construction Appeals for a term ending January 1, 2026.
Motion to approve. Second.
That's Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Fowler, roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Wade Stewart to position six on the Bella Vista Board of Construction Appeals for a term ending January 1, 2026.
Motion to approve. Second.
It was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Wasniak, roll call vote.
Councilmember Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is the resolution adopting the NWARPC Regional Bike and Pedestrian Plan, and this was the plan you have in your packet, which has been updated from 2014. Is there any discussion?
Not any discussion really, but was it Amy that kind of spoke? Yeah, supportive as well, very supportive. And this is something that's not going to unfold in any short period of time. And I know we can get Cassie to put that up probably on the city website, you know, so you can see what the map is. Yeah, yeah.
Good point. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wilmes and Mr. Fowler, roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item is announcements, the next city council work session is 5:30 p.m. on August 21 at the District Court, which is here. Next city council regular meeting, 6:30 p.m. Monday, August 28, at the District Court. Planning Commission work session, 4:30 p.m. August 3, at the District Court. Planning Commission regular meeting, 4:30 p.m. August 14, at the District Court. Board of Construction Appeals, 3 p.m. Tuesday, August 8, if necessary, at the Bella Vista District Court. So.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Wilmes?
Mr. Mayor, I was late at the meeting tonight, I apologize. It's been a long week, I've traveled over about 2,000 miles, so. And I maybe have missed something here, but item G on the agenda, did we cover that?
Let's see if G...
I don't have it marked down, and the chief of police would be angry with us if we didn't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did cover that.
We did, we missed it.
So I think we're all set then, meeting adjourned, thank you all for coming.